Okay, I'd like to open up the Urbana City Council meeting. Would the Clerk please call to roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Present.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is July 21st, 2008.
I approve.
Okay, motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? Additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, the first item is the appointment of the new alderman for Ward Two. I guess we should have a vote on that first, right? Before I swear a minute. Is there a motion to appoint David Garrick?
So moved.
Second.
On second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, David Garrick. I will read this oath of office to you in little phrases so you can repeat it after me. I won't say your name, you'll have to say your own name. Okay, would you please raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I-
Aye. David Garrick.
Having been appointed to the office of City Councilman, Ward Two-
Having been appointed to the office of City Councilman, Ward Two-
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign-
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign-
Illinois aforesaid-
Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Councilman, Ward Two, to the best of my ability.
Of City Councilman, Ward Two, to the best of my ability.
You may be seated in Ward Two.
If I could add, just a thank you for being willing to serve.
And welcome to the six inches of, you know, found documents on your desk in front of me.
My first reaction was, we're gonna need a bigger boat.
That's just the beginning, David. Need to tell you. Okay, you can sign this. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, let's move on to petitions and communications. And the first person is Harris Lewin, and he would like to talk about a sister city possibility in Brazil.
Can we dim the lights a little bit in the room? Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Pressing, for the opportunity to speak to you today for the City Council. Oh, of course. Professors usually stand. Okay, thank you very much. I am Professor Harris Lewin. I am the Director of the Institute for Genomic Biology at the University of Illinois. I'm not here to talk to you about our wonderful new $75 million institute, but rather, I'm here to seek your approval for a concept for a sister cities agreement between the city of Piracicaba in Brazil and Urbana, Illinois. The idea for this proposal really stems from a visit by Chancellor Herman from the University of Illinois, Dean Robert Easter from the College of Agricultural Consumer Environmental Sciences, myself and several others to Brazil last year. And during that visit, we had visited the campus of Piracicaba, which is the major agricultural campus of the University of Sao Paulo. And following that exchange, there was a return visit by Professor Weber Amaral to the University of Illinois this past spring. And since that time, there have been many back and forth discussions about the possibility of joining these two cities in a sister cities agreement. And I'm going to discuss this proposal with you now. Now, let me tell you a little bit about Piracicaba, because I think probably I'm the only one in this room who has been in Piracicaba, Brazil. It is a medium-sized city in the southeastern part of Brazil, in the state of Sao Paulo. Sao Paulo city is the largest city in Brazil. It's the third-largest city in the world. 14 million people located due, I would say, east, northeast of Piracicaba, about 100 miles. So the distance between Piracicaba and Sao Paulo is roughly equivalent to the distance between Urbana, say, and Chicago. The university, rather, the city was founded by Portuguese colonists back in 1767, and the word Piracicaba derives from a Tupi Indian word, which means place where the fish stop. And if you look at the slide, you'll see a major river. That's the River of Piracicaba, which runs through the city. And it's a, there's a very lovely waterfall, and they decided to establish the city directly across from this waterfall. And it has become one of the major hubs in the state of Sao Paulo for business and agriculture. The city has a population of approximately 300,000 people. It is a modern city with a variety of diversified economy, which includes food industry, textile industry, petrochemicals, and metallurgy. There are many Illinois-based international companies that are located in or near Piracicaba, including Caterpillar in Cabrasa, which is also located in Gilman, and Monsanto. The surrounding area, like our surrounding environment here, is primarily agricultural, although unlike our environment, they grow lots of sugarcane, oranges, and coffee. And in addition, it's one of the largest areas for livestock and poultry production in the country of Brazil. As I mentioned previously, Piracicaba is the home of the Agriculture Faculty of the University of Sao Paulo, as well as other smaller universities, including the Methodist University of Piracicaba. Now, something about the Agriculture College. The University of Sao Paulo has more than 40,000 students, sort of on the scale of what the University of Illinois is. And unlike the University of Illinois, its faculties are distributed around the state of Sao Paulo. And so the Agriculture Faculty would be equivalent to our College of Ases here at the University of Illinois. It is the oldest and most distinguished agriculture faculty, founded in 1901. There are more than 200 faculty members there, 2,000 undergraduate students, 1,000 graduate students. And most importantly, for me, as Director of the Institute for Genomic Biology, the ASALKI is the leader in the development and research around the use of sugarcane for ethanol production. Okay, and as those of you who have been to the gas station, the pump recently, you understand that at gas at $4 a gallon, there's tremendous interest around the world for alternative energy crops for the production of ethanol. And again, ASALKI is the leader in sugarcane-based research for the production of bioethanol. Brazil is the world's leader in ethanol production, very close to what actually we produce here, although we produce it from corn. There, they produce it from sugarcane, which is far more efficient than corn in the conversion of carbohydrate to ethanol, which can then be added to gasoline or used as transportation fuel. The University of Illinois has had a long relationship with ASALKI. It so happens that the first dean of the College of Agriculture of the University of Illinois was invited to become the first president of this university when the landowner, person who donated the land to the state of Sao Paulo, offered the job as president to Eugene Davenport in 1895. And I guess fortunate for the University of Illinois, Eugene Davenport turned down the offer to be president of this university and came to the University of Illinois as its first dean of the College of Agriculture. And there's a building on the University of Illinois named Davenport Hall, named after Eugene Davenport. At the present time, there's quite a bit of interaction between the College of Ases and the University of Illinois and the ASALKI group. There's a number of research groups that travel back and forth between the two universities. There's a longstanding student exchange agreement between the two universities. We have 65 students from Brazil that are studying here at the University of Illinois, and 60 students from the University of Illinois who are studying abroad in Brazil, and many of them at the university in Sao Paulo, and a large number of them actually on the Piracicaba campus. Now, Piracicaba and Urbana-Champaign, Champaign-Urbana, share many defining characteristics. Common characteristics, there are many close ties with the agricultural industry in the area. They're a little bit larger than Urbana and Champaign, with 200,000 to 300,000. It's more like 300,000 residents. But 37% of the population is under the age of 19. It's a very young population and a large number of students because of the universities in the town. And both universities are renowned for their cutting-edge research and facilities for agricultural research. Now, why a partnership between Piracicaba and Urbana makes sense? We'd like to think that an agreement with Piracicaba will give Urbana international connections, will enhance the city's presence on a world stage. I think that an agreement with Piracicaba will demonstrate a real vision, a progressive vision, for the city of Urbana as a cross-cultural, intercontinental city. There will be many opportunities, if we form a relationship with Piracicaba, to have cultural exchanges between Brazil and Piracicaba and Urbana. The relationship would encourage additional and future collaboration on renewable biofuels and other research on sustainable agricultural and environmental systems. And I think it will really give an image of Urbana as a leader in a green, energy-conscious movement in both industry and science. And last but not least, there should be numerous opportunities between the respective chambers of commerce in the cities to promote business and economic development in the two cities and in respective regions. The first word in Portuguese, if you don't know, they don't speak Spanish in Brazil, they speak Portuguese. And so the first word you should learn would be obrigado, which is "thank you," and "I do thank you." And I would also like to thank Senator Mike Ferrex for his support, and Peter Fox, and again, for his encouragement, Laura Ferrex, and Mayor Pressing again for allowing me to present this proposal to you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We do have Liz Davis here, who's our staff person who's heading up the sister cities. We have one sister city in Malawi, Zomba. And anyone have any questions for Harris Lewin? Dennis Roberts?
Of course, it's very, very exciting to consider a new sister-city relationship. We went from having none to now we have an abundance, perhaps we could call it, of the sister cities. This sister city comes to us in a very different way than our first sister city comes. Our first sister city, which is in Malawi, came from grassroots participation of individuals within our community, basically a church group and a Rotary Club. And it had basically philanthropic intent. And I see this sister city coming to us in a very different perspective. We're looking at a city that's 10 times as large as we are. So typically, the sister city organization, the international organization, suggests that cities seek communities that are of similar size and content and nature as themselves. So I would like to ask, I've got a couple of questions, but the first one is, how do you see the size differentiation to play in favor of a good sister-city relationship?
Well, in thinking about the relationship, we tried to overlook, to some degree, the size differences and focus more on the commonalities in terms of the university, the university-based town, the agricultural interests, and the, I think, the international, cross-cultural interests in the two cities. I don't think we, you know, gave really much thought to the relative size. It was more the location, the context that these two cities really sit, and their relationships to major urban areas, and the role that they play in the states that they're in.
Okay, my second question is this. The main industries in Urbana have to do with paper cups, and fenders, and car parts. And we don't have an ethanol plant here in our community.
Not yet.
So, and it sounds like, from what you described, the chief interests that you've been involved in, and the university itself, have been with mega-agriculture, future fuel development. So how do you see this community called Urbana to be compatible economically and industrially with this large city?
Yeah, I think there is certainly a city, but there's also a regional component to this. One of the major, I guess, industries in Urbana is the University of Illinois, and they also have the University of Sao Paulo. And one of the major industries within the university is, of course, a research function. And so the University of Illinois, I think, as you know, hosts a very large institute within the institute, which is funded by BP, which is a long-term, 10-year project, which will bring on the order of, you know, $50 million or more to the community over the next 10 years, which is fundamentally for research on alternative crops for energy production. So research and education are certainly two things that the two cities have in common. And then as far as the, you know, the industrial base of Urbana, I think with BP, you know, looking toward the future, if the technologies indeed are invented here for clean energy future, there's much reason to believe that BP may be interested in locating a pilot plant for ethanol production using these new technologies in this area.
Okay, I have another question. To my knowledge, the new research parks that are being created by the University of Illinois are not in Urbana. If research was to be done based on our sister-city relationship, what guarantee is there to the city that any of that research would actually occur within the boundaries of this city?
Well, if it's built over to the research park, unless Urbana builds a research park, that research would obviously be done in the city of Champaign. But for the moment, all the research is being done in Urbana, on the Urbana campus, and the Institute for Genomic Biology at an Urbana address. And so I think, you know, there may be opportunities for maybe Urbana to think about, how it may want to promote high-tech, green industries that are, you know, that may be coming to this area as a result of the agreements with BP and perhaps with the city of Piracicaba.
Wasn't it the University of Illinois who located the position of the research parks within the campus area?
Within-
The campus, the general city areas. In other words, so far here in Urbana, we haven't seen the university expressing any interest at all in developing research facilities in our community. All the research facilities that we've seen developed have been in the Champaign area. As a matter of fact, there's been very little development on this side of Wright Street that I can see that's sponsored by the university. So do you suspect that this might radically change the commitment of the university to the city of Urbana?
I really couldn't answer that question, because I'm not in a position to really know what the, you know, future plans for expansion of the research park might be, whether it may be in Champaign or Urbana. I can't say, and I certainly wasn't part of the decision on where to locate the current research park.
Okay.
Okay, Brandon Bowersachs?
Hi, thanks Professor Lewin. Thanks for bringing this proposal to us. I just wondered specifically, what is it that we can do to support you? I know, other than signing on the dotted line to formalize a sister-city relationship, what are the particulars that the city of Urbana can contribute to help your effort?
Well, I'm really relying on Elizabeth, and Elizabeth has asked me to suggest names of Urbana residents who could serve on a steering committee. And I think it's very important to get citizens from Urbana involved in this, because it's, you know, there's a cultural component to it, there's, you know, an economic component, there are multiple facets of this relationship. Certainly, this relationship should not be run out of the University of Illinois. This is not a University of Illinois relationship. It really should be city to city. I might add that my colleague in Brazil, who's at the University of Sao Paulo, Weber Amaral, has brought this before the Piracicaba mayor, and they are extremely enthusiastic about joining forces and making agreement with Urbana. And if this were passed the council, and you would decide to move forward, there are already contacts that we contact names, that names of people that we have in the mayor's office in Piracicaba, and we would just like to let this relationship develop naturally and flourish.
Thanks, yeah, I'm eager to hear how it moves forward and what Liz finds.
We did talk about having a sister city on every continent, maybe not Antarctica, I don't know, but, you know, pretty much every. Anybody else? Yes, Heather?
Well, I haven't been to Piracicaba, but I have been to, I flew into Sao Paulo, and then I went to Fortaleza, Brazil, and had a really good time in Brazil and enjoyed my time there. I have some, a personal friend who's actually was born and raised in Fortaleza, and then my dad has a staff member whose wife is from Brazil. And so we have some connections that I can try to work on to facilitate getting some people on a steering committee. So I do support trying to get this headed in the right direction to become a sister city with Brazil.
Thank you. Everybody who knows anybody from Brazil knows that they're wonderful, warm and friendly people, and I think they would be just great hosts to people from Urbana, as well as, you know, send wonderful people here on any exchanges that we could develop.
Charlie?
Well, since I'm in the College of Ases, the department within that, I'm probably more familiar with a lot of the kinds of research and stuff that goes on. I would like to point out that we have preeminent research in at least a couple of alternative crops going on already. The work of Steve Long, for example, and others. And so bringing in, you know, looking at alternative energies to corn is not unreasonable for our community and an opportunity, you know. Corn has got a lot of other uses, and it isn't as efficient. There are some other, the other higher quality, or there are alternative crops out there that would be much more efficient in use and could be used in, and grown in locations that where you wouldn't grow corn that might take advantage. And there is industrial space in Urbana that could be used. And as we all know, there's 20 million gallons of wastewater a day being generated in this community that could be tapped, far better than using fresh water, fresh well, you know, freshly dug water, whatever, fossil water for ethanol. So there are some things, and there are ways of doing this right, should we, you know, get as far as looking at putting together alternative ways of producing ethanol. So, you know, that's something I think worth pursuing. And I know that we'd all like to grow the industrial base of Urbana in some way. And so if, you know, we've got to take a chance with opportunities when they come knocking on our door. So, thank you, Dr. Lewin.
I just have a quick question. One of the concerns with locating an ethanol plant here using corn was the huge use of water, and we're not real sure that we have that available for the future. So does the sugarcane take less water to turn into ethanol?
Yes, a lot less water, and, you know, not thinking of growing, of course, sugarcane here.
We're not going to grow it here, but-
But as Charlie's pointed out, the alternative crops such as mesquitas, the grasses that Steve Long is working on in the Institute for Genomic Biology, have, they're looking at all the environmental water use. It's a very integrated project. And to my knowledge, Charlie, correct me if I'm mistaken here, that there's substantially less water that would be used in the production of ethanol from mesquitas.
Okay. Dennis?
Well, I would hope that if we embrace this new relationship, the university will embrace Urbana in a new and hearty way, in a way that we haven't quite enjoyed up to this point, I believe. We opened the door, and we have good intent, and we hope indeed, not only to build better bridges with a community in Sao Paulo, but with the research community within our own university structure. Okay.
Thank you. I'll just add that at our preliminary meeting, a representative from Chancellor Herman's office was there, Bill Adams, his chief budget advisor. And I can tell you that Chancellor Herman is aware that I'm here speaking with you tonight and is fully supportive of this concept. And I think this is a great way to build bridges and goodwill between the university and the city of Urbana.
Well, we really appreciate you coming here, and we'll, you know, we can't vote on it right now, because it's just the introduction to the council, but we will take it very seriously, and I appreciate the concept. I think it's pretty exciting.
Thank you, Mayor Pressing.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Mike Brunk, our arborist, would like to tell us about some interesting critters.
give you a little history of the Emerald Ash Bore. It's an insect that's devastating to ash trees. It was found in Michigan in 2002, and since has killed 40 million ash trees in Michigan. And it's spread throughout the Midwest, killing tens of millions of more ash trees. So we're very concerned about this little insect. Back in around 2004, I believe, the city of Urbana stopped planting ash trees. Our entomologist on our tree commission says it's inevitable that we're going to get the insect. So what we are all trying to do in the communities that don't have the Emerald Ash Bore is to slow it down. In fact, that's what the United States, the federal government's trying to do, is to slow its spread down. It's a very costly insect, if you can consider how many 40 million ash trees would cost to remove. So it's very devastating to the community. And tonight, I want to give you a little update. And why, why tonight? The insect, up until now, has been in northern Illinois, and we were hoping that quarantining northern Illinois would keep the insect out of downstate areas or our community especially. It is traveling, though, by firewood. Man is traveling, is causing this insect to move around the United States. It only flies about a mile, a mile and a half, and only lives about a year. But the insect is moving through ash wood. And if there's anything that I want to get across tonight to folks in our community is that we need to be religious about where we're getting our firewood. And we certainly do not want to be buying firewood from the joblo driving down the street selling firewood. Just last firewood season, I saw that in my own neighborhood, and that happens every year. We don't know where that firewood comes from. In the state of Illinois, firewood is quarantined, not just ash firewood, but all hardwood firewood. Is not to be coming in from out of state, from infected states such as Indiana, now Missouri, just recently Missouri has the insect. We cannot sell Illinois firewood outside of our state. There is no quarantine, however, for firewood moving within its boundaries of the state. So that's where we have to be careful. And I want to preach to the community tonight that we need to be very religious about this and focus our firewood purchases locally. Now, to be fair to some of the firewood salespeople, the USDA does certify organizations and firewood. And if firewood is coming from outside the community, it should be USDA certified, and there's obvious labels on that firewood that shows that. So the outbreak has now reached Bloomington, that's 60 miles away. And the reason they found it in Bloomington is some purple traps that they're putting out, which they haven't, they're going about checking in August, but this was just, an insect was found in a trap by another inspector searching for another insect. He just happened to look into one of the Emerald Ash Bore traps and found the Emerald Ash Bore. We have traps in our community. In fact, they're across the United States, and they're being inspected in August. And we should know in September a better idea of where this insect is across our state. What does it mean to Urbana? In Urbana, we have 750 ash trees on our street, and we estimate 10 times that on private property. Extrapolate the cost of those removals, we're looking at about $600,000 cost to the city alone, $6 million in cost in tree removal cost for this community if the Emerald Ash Bore hits us. The insect is not only attracted to unhealthy and stressed ash trees, which most insects are attracted to stressed trees. This one's attracted to healthy trees as well. And it increases exponentially. So 10 Emerald Ash Bores in this tree would be 100 next year, and 1,000, and then 10,000, and so on. So it really spreads dramatically fast. In fact, the experts think we're on the cusp of an explosion of this insect is just, we're right on the breaking edge of this thing just getting way out of hand. What should we do? And that's what I'm here to present to you tonight, is the fact that we are studying an action plan. We're planning to get together with the city of Champaign, and Bill and I, the forestry supervisor over there, are going to try to coordinate representatives from surrounding communities such as Savoy and Rantoul, and get the Illinois Department of Ag and some master gardeners involved, and come up with a game plan for this entire area, an action plan that we all will plan to follow. And what that will include is, one, educating the public. There are numerous insects out there that are look-alikes. First of all, what an ash tree is. We want the citizens to look for this, but we need them to educate themselves so we don't get 1,000 calls on suspect plants that aren't even ash trees. We have handouts at the Public Works Garage. We will be giving talks on the Illinois Gardener Show, local news TV morning shows, the newspaper, things of that nature, to help people understand what an ash tree is and how to...
Mike, turn it up.
Recognize the insect. First of all, an ash tree, compound leaf. It has paddle, canoe paddle-like leaves. The leaflets made up of the, that make up the compound leaf are anywhere from five to nine leaflets, typically seven. The ash tree has a diamond-shaped type bark, furled bark like you see here in front of me, and some of the seedless ash varieties will have flower galls. But we're going to, planning on going into detail and educating the public on what ash trees look like. Also, while I'm here, I have a sample of the Emerald Ash Bore, and it's a lot smaller than what people think. That's a nickel. That's the Emerald Ash Bore. Typically, no longer than a half inch in length. We can't really see the color very well, but it's a metallic green color. And it leaves, the cards that I handed out to you all, I also have identification cards that I can hand out at Public Works to the public. And it gives a little information on the Emerald Ash Bore, an emergency number to call, and description and pictures of their exit holes in the trees. So we'll be going through that kind of a campaign. We're getting calls on other insects, one of which I have, just to show you that there's others out there that are imposters. This guy likes me. This is a green june bug. Again, we can't see the color very well, but it's a metallic green, and he's much larger. In fact, he's about the size of a nickel. And this little guy has a tendency to fly low over the yard and bang into walls and fall down into the ground and get up and fly again. That's his typical characteristic. And then there are various other insects. There's the tiger beetle, there's the cuckoo wasp, there's the dog vein beetle, there's the caterpillar hunter, and the Japanese beetle, which we all know well. They're all metallic green. Then you have other ash bores that leave exit holes in the ash trees. There's the red-headed ash bore, and there's the ash lilac bore. So these are all kinds of identification things that we want to teach the public. We're going to also be looking at spreading the word about not bringing firewood into the community. There are two websites that we would like to share tonight and will continue to share for people to keep updated on the Emerald Ash Bore. And the first one is www.emeraldashborr, all one word, dot info. The second one is illinoiseab.com. So that's emeraldashborr.info and illinoiseab.com. Those will provide lots of information about the Emerald Ash Bore. When we get together with the communities, we'll be looking at things to put in our action plans, such as removing unhealthy and dead ash trees. These are incubators for that insect. We want to get rid of, as fast as we can, the unhealthy and the dead ash trees out of our communities. Also, by removing our ash trees now, if it's inevitable that we're going to be getting the ash bore, we have 750 ash trees to remove. It would be much more economical for our community to remove them over a long period of time rather than a short period of time. The problem with ash trees also is when they die, they fall apart fast. They don't hold their wood very well, so they become hazards quickly. We also need to ensure that the local professional arborists are aware of the situation and how to handle ash tree removals. We will look to do such things as, and the Department of Ag will mandate this if we become quarantined, that all ash wood will be covered when it's transported from the site of removal to its processing facility. If it's not chipped, it has to be covered in a tarp or containerized truck. We have to have a process at facility in this community. So the other thing we'll look to be doing is, in fact, we're starting that process, is looking to have the Landscape Recycling Center become a certified processing facility for this devastating insect. And then the last thing I just want to share with everybody is that the Department of Ag, if you haven't seen them, around this community in the state of Illinois have put out purple traps. And you should all be aware that those are Emerald Ash Bore traps. And they are pheromone traps to attract the insect, not from outside the community, but if the insect is in our community, it should attract it to the trap, and we will know, better know, the location of these insects throughout our state. Any questions? Charlie?
Yeah, I brought up the Emerald Ash Bore website as you were talking, and it talks about a pesticide that is injected into a tree. Let's see, amamectin benzoyate. I don't know if any costs have come out for that, or whether, you know, if it's, another idea would be to, you know, try to go and, you know, get rid of our non-healthy trees, but then try to...
Save our healthy trees.
Save our healthy trees using something like this and what the cost might be.
Yeah, that's a very good point. There's two chemicals that are being tried right now for the Emerald Ash Bore. The first thing that the Department of Ag tells everybody, and our communities should also tell our residents, is that when you treat an Emerald Ash Bore, please understand that it's no guarantee that the state's not going to come and mandate the removal of that tree if it shows signs of decline. But the whole idea of this program is to save our healthy ash trees. The two types of chemicals that are used on these trees, there's one that, which you were talking about, that is done through injections, that it would have to be done through professional arborists with specific injection equipment that's injecting the chemical through holes in the tree and with pressure. The other is Merit, and some of you may be aware of this particular chemical. It's a grub control. We, some of us use it for grub control in our lawns. The same chemical is available in a product called Bayer, just like the aspirin, and it's called Tree and Shrub Insect Control. And that's promoted for Japanese beetle control. And it's a very easy method of treatment in that you pour this chemical according to directions, you mix it with water, and pour it around the base of a tree. And you do, depending on the size of the tree, young trees, you'll do it in March or April. If they're eight or nine or 10 inches or larger, you'll probably want to do it the fall before. But in Chicago, they're using this, and some of the other northern communities are using Merit as a way to treat their trees. And this is a systemic chemical that gets into the tree, the beetles feed on it, whether they're the larva stage or the adult stage, and it kills them. So there's signs that that works. It is recommended, though, that the tree not be treated until the insect is within 15-mile radius of the community. And that we should know by September.
Any other questions for Mike Brunk? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? I don't think we have any old business, or we don't have any reports of standing committees or special committees, reports of officers. Is there anyone who wants to give a report? Tom Carino, Economic Development.
Earlier today, I emailed out this month's economic development report. If anyone has not received it, I'd be happy to provide a hard copy at some point. But just to highlight some items in the report, concentrating on the university area, Gregory Place Phase Two, construction is complete. Some tenants that have committed to the space include a Provena user. Sandell's Flatbread Restaurant has not opened, but they've committed to opening at that location. And the U of I School of Social Work will be occupying the office floor. The businesses in the area have taken the initiative to create what is tentatively being called the Cranert Center Entertainment District, which is a group of businesses with city assistance and involvement from the Urbana Business Association to help promote businesses in the area. At the corner of Lincoln Avenue and University, 901 West University is a mixed-use building that's under construction. And then also, related to the university, August 21st is freshman move-in, and we are organizing a student welcome effort similar to last year's, where we'll provide information to students on a variety of topics, including a welcome brochure highlighting businesses in Urbana that, restaurants, housewares, supermarkets, anything that a person new to the community would need to create a home here in Urbana. So that's moving forward. And just as an aside, August 21st is a Thursday, so this year freshman student move-in is on a weekday, and the university is, wants to let the community know that, in that it might be a good idea to avoid the area because of the congestion that day. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Tom. Anyone else with report of officers? Okay, let's move on to new business. I'm suggesting two reappointments, the tree commission, Lawrence Hanks, and the zoning board of appeals, Nancy Euken.
Euken.
Euken, sorry.
So moved.
I second the motion for the reappointment.
Okay, was that, that was Heather, and seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next, there's a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a real estate option and contract for property located at 302 West Springfield Avenue. That's Almond's Auto Repair. We already have this, this is to extend it. Brandon?
If I can just play devil's advocate and ask a question or two here, Tom, and then make a motion. First off, are we paying $5,000 every time we extend, or, well, we're not really extending or renewing, getting a new option? Are we out now $10,000 or $15,000?
The, every... The, every time we extend, it has cost us $5,000. However, that $5,000 has been credited towards the purchase price each time. So i- in the event that we do close on the property, there will be no loss in that, that's reflected in the purchase price. However, if for some reason we were to not close on the property, then that would be a loss.
And to play devil's advocate, why continue to renew, I mean, this one will be up in December and that's coming fast, why not either go for a longer option or just, we know there's, you know, environmental problems on the site, pick a lower price because it's not worth the full price and, you know, negotiate it and close on the property now, knowing that we're going to have to deal with the environmental someday? So, yeah, yeah, tell, why the, why the short term and why can't we just-
Sure.
-pick a number now?
The reason that it's not a longer option is that this is what the seller has offered. We've requested longer, this is what the seller has offered. As to why not just close on the property, there are just too many unknowns related to the environmental, and we do have an environmental attorney who's helping us through these issues. And as noted in the staff memo, although this extension is through December 22nd, indications are that if we choose to work with IEPA to get a no further remediation letter, it will not be done by December 22nd of 2008. Indications are that it will likely be into 2009 before we secure that. So the, the question as to why not just close and move forward, I think really the answer is there are just too many unknowns at this point, including the fact that aside from all of the environmental, there are irregular subsurface conditions, meaning when the Flatiron Building was demolished, it wasn't demolished in a way that would be acceptable to today, to today's standards, in that rubble was just kind of filled in loosely. So a building similar to the Flatiron Building could not be built on that site right now. That means that in order to get a redevelopment project for the site, we need to combine it with neighboring sites. And that's the second reason as to why we haven't closed, in that we're negotiating with neighboring property owners. Now, there have been some movements forward on negotiating with those neighboring property owners as compared to last time we extended the option, but that's still preliminary as well. We could, if it were the will of council, we could close on the property and turn it into a public plaza, but if we choose to redevelop it as, redevelop it as a redevelopment project, it needs to be in conjunction with neighboring sites.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Dennis.
Well, I had similar concerns. You know, we've been interested in this, this particular location, actually quite interested in it for a long time. We keep running into, this is, I don't know, the third time we've renegotiated, and now we've just learned from your words that we'll probably renegotiate one more time before 2009. It's discouraging that we can't get, you know, a longer run. So if we can't get a long run, why would, shouldn't the short runs be less expensive to the city? Why, are we stuck with a certain particular fee for our renewals or has it had anything to do with the time constraint?
As to the, the cost of the option and the time that they're offering, this is what has been offered and accepted in the past. Generally, it's been a five to six-month exception, extension for $5,000, and that's what we've done the last two times, this being the third. We asked for longer, that the counter offer was this amount of time for this amount of money, which is consistent with what's been done in the past. We could theoretically go back to the representatives of the current owner and ask for more, but again, this is consistent with what we've done in the past, so we, we were comfortable bringing this forward to council again.
I've got one more question. You know, I've heard, yes, that the land under the building is, is infill rubble, but you know, all of Europe was infill rubble after World War II. And my understanding is that some of those cities actually, actually were rebuilt. So I can't believe that with a good, with a good steam shovel in our backhoe or something, that the land under the building couldn't be excavated down to a substantial level where either piers could be built or, you know, compacted sand brought in. There are, I'm sure there are, there are technological ways of building buildings on somewhat disturbed property. So I find it disingenuous somehow to hear that it's impossible to make, make, put a development on this property. It would seem to me that actually if excavation occurred and, and some of the contaminant land was removed to a approved landfill site or processed, which I suppose is going to have to be done anyway at some point by somebody, that we couldn't think about this a little more proactively and a little more intuitively. So, okay, you're thinking, perhaps you have thought about this, I'd like to hear about it.
Sure. I don't, if, if I implied that a Flatiron Building could not be built on the property, that's not true. It certainly could be done, however, the cost of excavating the rubble and/or sinking caissons to hold up a building above the rubble is certainly possible, but the city is not a developer, so we need to partner with developers, and there's no developer at this point willing to take that on because of the cost involved. Now, we could certainly work to clear the site as far as environmental and then work with a developer through a TIF redevelopment agreement to make the project more attractive and more cost-effective, but a Flatiron Building could not be rebuilt cost-effectively without moving forward with the environmental and then some engineering on how exactly to do it. It's definitely possible. It's just not probable with the current economic climate, and the developers that we've talked to aren't, just aren't willing to do it right now.
Okay. We do, we do have EPA guidelines that we have to follow, so it's not the same thing as it might have been in Europe 50 years ago. Robert.
How much data do you have right presently on this site? Actual engineering data?
We have a, what you, I guess you would consider a partial Phase Two at this point. It was determined that in order to approach IEPA for an NFR letter, there was additional investigation that needed to be done. The initial investigation didn't exactly define the boundaries of the contamination, and so we need additional investigation to determine the exact boundaries of the contamination before we go to IEPA to get what's called a no further remediation letter or NFR letter. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would it extend into the surrounding properties?
Indications are that it may, contamination may extend into the right-of-way, but it doesn't appear that there's extensive, it does not extend extensively to the neighboring properties. That's preliminary indications. At least it doesn't extend beyond the right-of-way is what the preliminary findings are.
Is it difficult to get that data?
Actually, we, we have a proposal from an engineering firm to get that data. We didn't authorize them to move forward until after tonight because we wanted to make sure that we were extending the option. So, and then additionally, the, there are different levels for the no further remediation letter depending on what the end use is going to be. If the city were to say, we're going to put a daycare on-site, then IEPA wants it much cleaner than if we're going to turn it into a parking lot or some other use that's not quite as intensive. So IEPA will want some information as to what we're proposing, and then they'll say, okay, you need to clean to this level. Or if it's something much more intensive where there's much closer contact with soil, they'll say you have to clean to a much higher level. So that'll all depend on how we move forward with IEPA based on the data we collect.
So it sounds like, and I know that we had a similar remediation question on the west edge of the Gateway Shops, and what I noticed was that there was a black topping that it took place on a, you know, like a 10-foot wide strip, you know, down the entire street or something. That was considered remediation, apparently was a write-off on that. It sounds like in these instances, the safest thing to do is have a, is to make it either a brick plaza or a parking lot, because then you've asphalted the surface and you've basically contained the, the material below it. So that really would change the concept of how the property might have been used by the city. I think we had, you know, some hopes that it could be an interesting development, and now that doesn't sound too good. So I guess my question is, how, how easy will it be to get this write-off, assuming that we don't actually dig a basement or something at that property?
Well, the, as I mentioned, depending on the use will depend on the difficulty. If we were to say, say we wanted to make a public plaza that's, it's not a parking lot, but concrete, some planters, that might be a much easier NFR letter than if we were to say we want residential on the first floor. The residential standard is much higher because of the close contact that residents would have with the soil. If we were to say make it a blacktop for a parking lot, again, much easier, but I don't know if parking because of the geometrics and because of surface parking lots proliferating in downtown, I'm not sure if that's the highest and best use for the property. But again, parking lot, public plaza, those uses would be relatively easy. And again, in relation to negotiating with neighboring property owners, if we were to successfully negotiate a redevelopment on a neighboring property and make a complimentary public plaza out of the Almond site, that would be maybe not a redevelopment in and of itself, would be, but would be an amenity for a neighboring property, then it has a much higher and better use for redevelopment.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Brandon.
Well, I'd like to see a larger redevelopment there someday, so I would move approval of this motion.
Second. Motion by Bowers, seconded by Smythe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-08-080, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2007-07-071 and to approve a special use permit to allow the construction of multifamily dwellings at 1008, 1010 and 1012 West University Avenue to include a parking lot at 508 North Goodwin Avenue in the B3 general business zoning district. And this is a planned case involving Trammell Crowe, and Robert Myers is here to explain it.
Sure. Good evening. Just to give everyone a quick overview and for the audience as well, again, this is 1008, 1010 and 1012 West University Avenue. These properties, previously you all approved a special use permit to allow apartments to be located at this site as part of a redevelopment that would include about 9,000 square feet of retail on the first floor, parking underneath the building, and then four floors above for, for residences. In other words, a mixed-use building. And the, that was approved by you all in July 2007. Subsequently, the developers have moved forward and they have made progress in the proposal, but along the way, they've run into a couple of problems that's forced them to rethink how the project would turn out. Essentially, the problems have to do with utilities and property lines. And I won't get into too much of the details, you can read that in your memo, but essentially rather than having underground parking, they still want to keep the one grade of parking underneath the building, but they want to add a parking lot component to their development behind Durst Cycle, Dos Realos and Hot Walk Building, what's now the Almond Hecker Site. That's 508 North Goodwin Avenue. So they want to have a surface parking lot in conjunction with this building that they still want to do, which has not changed. So the additional parking lot would be 185 spaces in the surface parking lot. There still will be 99 spaces underneath that building. And again, the parking lot would not be right on University Avenue, but behind those existing businesses. Almond Hecker would be relocated to a different site, which they're agreeable to. And we've, in terms of the development standards, the parking lot meets the development standards. It would include carports, the lighting would be underneath the carports, so there would not be spillover on the neighboring property, except for, there would be two, my recollection is there would be two light standards, and those would be full cutoff lighting, so it wouldn't have a spillover. From Goodwin Avenue, what you would see is there's a landscape buffer that would be along Goodwin Avenue, and there would be a gate that would have controlled access. And that's essentially the gist of what the changes, what the changes would be. The plan commission recommended at their July 24th meeting, seven to zero, to recommend that the city council approve the, the revised special use permit in this case. And if you have any questions about any of the criteria or anything like that, just let me know.
I'd like to go and get a motion on the floor to approve ordinance number 2007-07-071. Second. Okay, I believe that was motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Roberts.
So it's, is it true then that the general shape of the building itself that had some retail, as I recall, on the first floor, hasn't really changed? It's really the parking configuration that's behind it?
That's right.
Okay. And we're still expecting some retail development on the first floor?
Yes, about 9,000 square feet of, of retail on the first floor. It'd still have 99 parking spaces underneath the building.
Yeah.
And you would enter underneath the building, in the middle of the, of the building, I mean, basically you would drive underneath the building from University Avenue, and then you could exit the back side of the building, and you could exit on Goodwin Avenue from, through the, this new parking lot that they're proposing.
Thank you.
Brandon.
I support this. I think the special use permit is definitely justified, and I just wanted to say, this is the first time I've seen a business neighbor not excited about hundreds of new customers moving in right next door. So to the developers of this, I'm sorry that somehow it's turned into a property line dispute that escalated to a court case, but at least from the city's perspective, we're really glad to have this kind of high-quality development here and think they'll be good neighbors. So, so I support this.
All right, we have a motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes? Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-08-081, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement, first amended and restated with TC Met Urbana LLC, 1008 and 1012 West University Avenue. Again, this is Trammell Crowe. This time it's Tom Carino.
Yes, you have before you an amended redevelopment agreement with TC Met Urbana LLC, which is associated with Trammell Crowe. The original development agreement was approved by ordinance in November 2007, and as you've heard since that time, there has been a redesign as presented in the special use permit that you've approved. To account for the redesign, the development agreement has been amended. Some major amendments are highlighted in gray in your packet. The major changes include the timelines, which are summarized on pages three and four of your staff memo, have been adjusted, including the completion date of the project, which is now July 31st of 2010. Related to the new completion date, the developers asked that the TIF reimbursement be compressed to three years where it was four years before. So that means that the TIF reimbursement for eligible expenses on annual incremental property taxes has been increased to 85% annually. The total reimbursement continues to be stable at $1,250,000, which again is consistent with the previous agreement. The increase to 85% really just allows the developer to approach that 1.25 million where they wouldn't have in a three-year period previously. Another major change is that the attachments to the redevelopment agreement have been changed to reflect the new design. We do have representatives of Trammell Crowe here if you have any questions related to the development agreement. I'd be happy to- I'd be happy to try to answer them.
We don't seem to have any questions.
I would make the motion to approve ordinance number 2008-08-081.
Second.
Okay. By Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-08-082, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow vehicles to back out onto a public street at 202 North Kohler Avenue in the R4 medium-density, multiple-family residential zoning district. Robert Myers?
Okay, thank you. I was just thinking a little earlier that the title, from the title, it's easy to draw, that it's, it sounds kind of an esoteric sort of, uh, variance, um, but at the same time, it has real consequences for the property owners. Um, you may recall that you all granted a similar variance for the knitting shop on Main Street. Essentially, um, in cases where there's no room to maneuver on-site and you're forced to back out, single-family homes and duplexes are allowed by right to back out because of the amount of traffic that they generate, but other sorts of uses do not have that right, um, necessarily to back out from parking spaces onto a street. And in this case, the, the property owner, um, at 202 North Kohler Avenue, that's on the northeast corner of Stoughton and Kohler, the property is owned R4, which allows apartments, um, by right, as long as it meets all of those development requirements. In this case, the property owner applied for two variances having to do with parking, one of which was, um, to park in a required front yard. That was denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals. But the second variance, which is before you tonight, was recommended unanimously by the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, on June 11th. And that second variance, again, is to back out onto a, um, a public street. The question is, um, because this is a hall, a house that was converted in the 1950s, best as we can tell, into apartments, and over time, the apartments have been added on to in terms of the number of units. It's, the house has never had a backyard or a side yard that we can tell, or at least it hasn't for decades. And so there's literally nowhere in the backyard or side yard to park. And so, um, literally anywhere on the lot that you park is going to have to back out, or I guess you could have a circle drive maybe in the front yard. Do people really want that, um, either? They, um, there are some, a prop, there is some property code violations that the current owner hasn't inherited, but he's trying to, to work out with our code inspectors. There is a, um, fifth apartment unit, um, that was put in by a previous property owner that needs to get building permits for, actually, that's what triggered this. He came to the city and said, "I, you know, I need to get permits for this unit," and the city said, "Um, well, let's make sure that the zoning is, um, in place before you go to the, um, the task of, um, putting in real money in terms of, um, making improvements to that unit." So that's where, essentially, that we're at tonight. The, um, in terms of the criteria, there is, I'm sorry. The variance is necessary because there is a practical difficulty, and that's a small lot without space for vehicles to turn around and maneuver. Um, it will not alter the character of the neighborhood or cause a nuisance to adjacent properties because of the number of units, and it's not going to change the exterior of the building. And it does represent the minimum possible deviation from the zoning ordinance that will allow continued use of the property as multifamily dwellings. Um, this, the rationale of the Zoning Board of Appeals was that, um, if this apartment is, um, this last fifth apartment, if it's, if it gets, uh, approval in terms of building codes, he would need to back out. If it doesn't get approved, and he turns it back into a garage, he would need to back out. So there's no really, there's no real way around the, um, the fact that if, if we want any, or if the property owner wants any on-site parking, he has to back out. So that's an essence of the, of the variance request.
Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, thanks for your summary. You know, uh, the knitting, the knitting shop just has basically a room for one car to be backing out. According to the photograph on this, of this apartment, you, there's potentially five cars that could be backing out at any one time, and there's, and there's exponentially so many more backing outs occurring on the street. Is that a concern for, um, in terms of safety, just by the very number of backouts that are required for this apartment building? It's not really a very, considered a very safe or useful, um, means of egressing onto a, um, you know, a city street. But now we have five, five slots in a row that are going to be doing it on a daily basis, probably like five to 10 times a day, depending on what the shopping levels of these people are going to be. So it's not a very advantageous thing, yet you're saying that basically it doesn't upset the city staff?
Um, well, we've, we've talked to Public Works about this, and they feel that it's okay for a couple of reasons, that it would be, it would be acceptably, um, safe. One is that, um, it represents five cars, and unlike other apartment buildings, we're not talking about 20 cars, 100 cars, or anything like that, when you're talking about the scale. Two, there's quite a few single-family homes where you have five cars parked in, or four cars parked in a driveway. Not everyone's going to be backing out at the same time, but obviously, there's going to be at any one time, probably one, uh, car backing out. You're right that it's, um, likely to be more trips than just simply a single-family home at the same time. In term, uh, compared to the, uh, the knitting shop, a knitting shop is a low-intensity use, but it is still a commercial use, so you do have more trips coming and going from, from retail. I would say that it is a, it is a residential use, which is, uh, lower on the scale of the number of trips. Admittedly, it's five dwelling units. Three of those are efficiencies, and, um, one is a one-bedroom, I believe, and another's a two-bedroom.
Heather Stevenson?
This might seem trivial, but clearly, they're already backing out. I mean, their, their cars are parked head-in, and there's no other way around, so I mean, it's kind of like, why wouldn't we approve it?
Well, um-
What, what are the other options? Really, I mean, you, like you said, with the exception of building the circle drive, which seems a little ridiculous, but where are the other options of parking?
There's a, there's a good, a couple of, of points here. One is that we don't know the exact dates, um, when everything went in, but we believe that people have been parking on this concrete pad and backing out for, for years from this site. We don't have exact dates in terms of grandfathering and all those sorts of complicated questions, but we felt that, um, in order to, um, be safe in terms of parking, whether it's parking in either this driveway or in a, in a, in a future garage, they're still going to have to, to back out. And I, I agree with your point about where else can they park? I mean, there's literally no rear yard, literally no side yard. It's on a corner, so there's two front yards, and you can't park in a front yard, um, under the, under our, um, city ordinance.
Robert Lewis?
You mentioned that the one, um, facility within this is under scrutiny right now for code?
Right.
And the impact of that was?
Impact of the code review?
Yeah, the code review.
Right.
On what our decision is tonight.
The code reviewers actually, um, ask the property owner to clear up the zoning first before they do any, uh, review. One or the other has to move first. I mean, if you say, "We're not going to do the zoning until the code inform, you know, the code people say it's okay," and the code people say, um, the building code people say, "We're not going to review it until the zoning is okay," but we thought that probably the safest course was, rather than invest a lot of money first, um, in the building, and then taking the gamble on whether or not they can get the zoning approval, let's do the zoning approval first, and if they can't get that, then at least they won't waste it, have wasted their money in terms of building improvements.
Or the other thing, let's have them back in, right? No, I'm just kidding.
Back in, yeah, we have to back in. Didn't say you couldn't go, "Back in," it just says "back out."
Charlie Smythe?
Is there any reason we couldn't, uh, add to this variance the requirement that they convert the garage back to being a garage?
If, let's see. You can ask for conditions, um, if the conditions are reasonably related to, yeah, to the request, making the, um, making the requested variance, any effects of the requested variance better. I, I guess what would be the tie-in, what would be the link between?
Well, right now, you see four or five cars parked in that space outside the garage. Um, it gets a little, I would imagine, gets a little tricky getting in and out of there, including the, the extra pad that was poured at some point. With the garage, it, uh, it gives them more maneuvering room in the existing space.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you have two cars in the garage and two cars in the, in the driveway. If one car needs to get out of the garage, you have the car that can park behind the other car, and you've got a, a clear, a clear shot out to the street. That sort of thing gives you more jockeying room within, within the parking space there. Street parking is very tight in that area. It's almost non-existent, and so, um-
Well, should, should this variance be granted, um, they still couldn't park on that concrete pad because it's in the required front yard setback. So what the property owner has done on an interim basis, he's, um, renting spaces off-site within 600 feet, which is allowed, um, in our zoning ordinance. He is, um, um, looking seriously at, um, applying to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance to allow a couple of cars to park in that, which is frankly what's been happening maybe for 50 years or something, um, for a couple of cars. Now, if he gets that, should that variance, uh, go forward, that request, he's still going to need to have a variance to back out, um, on top of that. So whether he, it's in the, see who's parking in the garage or on that concrete pad, he's going to need to be able to back out.
Dennis Roberts?
Well, it's not beautiful, but I guess it's functional, and I do realize that I back out all the time from my garage into the street, so I guess I don't have a great complaint if the, if, um, planning, the planning board is, you know, supports it and zoning is acceptable. A lot of us back out of our driveways into the streets to conduct business, so.
So I would move that we approve it.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know anyone who doesn't back out of their driveway.
I did. Okay. Okay, there's a motion by, um, Dennis Roberts, seconded by Lynn Barnes. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2008-08-083, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, rezoning 804 and a half East Main Street from B3 general business to B2 neighborhood business arterial. Robert Myers?
Thanks. Um, this is the request by someone who has a contract to purchase the property, and this request is supported by the property owner. When the purch, when the person who, um, has a contract to purchase the property, um, inquired about, um, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought there. When he, um, required, inquired with his, um, bank about purchasing the property, um, they would not, uh, approve purchase because the zoning does not allow a residence by right in the zoning district. There is a residence on this property, and there's also a storefront. Storefront obviously is on the street, and then there's the residence behind, but in the bank's rationale, and this is a pretty common thing for banks to, um, to operate under, the principle to operate under, if you, if you're paying money to purchase, um, a house on a property, and the house burns down and you can't rebuild, then, um, you've, you've lost your investment, and so has the bank. So the zoning doesn't really fit very well, um, with the use, current use of the property. The zoning right now is B3 general business district, and this request by the petitioner is to rezone it, uh, down one notch to B2 neighborhood business arterial. And the, and the B2 zoning district allows residential by right, and it also allows, uh, retail by right. So it seems, um, especially when you read the purpose of the intent of the B2 zoning district in our zoning ordinance, it really fits, um, wonderfully with the current use of the property. The property is a very narrow parcel, it's only 16 and a half feet wide. So you have a storefront and a house behind it on a lot that's only 16 and a half feet wide. So you might ask, what's, what's the rationale for rezoning a sliver of property when there's B3 on either side? And the answer to that is that, um, as a matter of fact, city staff is bringing forward a rezoning proposal as, uh, part of the historic East Urbana neighborhood, which would include this block and others on the north side of Main Street, rezone them, those properties from B3 to B2, um, which would help out actually, properties that are in this same boat, that are in the same circumstance. It's just that this property owner, or excuse me, the, the person who has this property in a contract, he's not able to wait because he has a pending, he has a sale pending, so he's not able to wait until that city-initiated rezoning comes before you in a few weeks. The, um, Plan Commission recommended unanimously for approval, and city staff likewise recommends for approval.
Charlie Smythe?
Move approval.
Second.
There you go.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Barnes. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, um, we have a discussion on implementing a car-share program. That would be in Urbana-Champaign, correct? Pat Paletti?
Thank you, thanks, Chris. Um, the, uh, this agenda item is titled, "A Discussion on a Car-Share Program," and I have some, I actually have a council memo, or a memo to the council to hand out. And the reason we're, we're approaching it this way, frankly, is because, uh, the calendar for this group to meet for the rest of the month is, is, uh, a little thin. So we're going to, I'm going to present it tonight, try to answer all your questions, and then actually bring back, uh, for the September meeting, bring back the intergovernmental agreement that we're going to discuss tonight, and, um, a budget amendment at that time. But that, that's really the end of the story. Uh, the, the front part is, uh, that the city of Urbana and the city of Champagne, the Mass Transit District, and the University of Illinois have been exploring, mutually exploring a car-share agreement for some time. The MTD actually conducted an RFP process last January. Two responses were received. We went through a, a fairly exhaustive process of, uh, meeting and interviewing both responders, and, uh, are recommending that we go forward with Zipcar. There were, the two responders were IGO and Zipcar. IGO, you may be aware, is a not-for-profit, uh, agency. Uh, Zipcar is a for-profit agency. Uh, both of them have fairly broad-based programs. Zipcar is an international corporation. Um, the reason that we're recommending that we go forward with Zipcar over IGO is the expenses to the local agencies are actually less with the for-profit entity than the not-for-profit entity. Um, and that's based upon what they tell us. That's not based upon any, uh, any more exact science than what they say it takes for their program to run, and what the local effort of, of that, uh, program running is. Um, the, uh, the other reason that, uh, you don't have the agreement in front of you at this point is that, uh, details of it are still being hammered out. Um, the city of Champagne is going to look at it this month, the, the MTD board- The city of Champagne is going to look at it this month, the MTD board, and the U of I. I'm not sure which approval process it'll go through over there, but all those efforts will take place hopefully in August. We'll have the agreements approved in early September so that we can move forward. We're signing the contract with Zipcar and have an October launch of the program locally. There's already been a great deal of interest. I've put some highlights of the agreement in this memo. I know it's a little sparse, so I'll talk through it as we go along. In terms of the highlights of the agreement, we're looking at a three-year contract with Zipcar. MTD would be the lead agency, the contracting agency for that. The other agencies have agreed that we would split the revenue guarantee equally, 25% share for each. In addition to that, 25% cost, the MTD also is taking on the local management of the program. So they've dedicated a staff person to it. They'll be the... excuse me, the resource for any issues that arise, getting the cars in for maintenance, all getting the cars repaired. All those things that come up through the course of operation will be MTD's responsibility. Urbana would have two cars placed outside the university district, likely downtown. These cars will be in designated spaces, so they'll be... even though the vehicles themselves will have the Zipcar logo on the side, there'll also be a Zipcar logo sign, a reserved space for that vehicle, perhaps one in this area, Lincoln Square, or even on this block, and also otherwise, you know, downtown. Those specific spaces haven't been identified yet, but the agreement calls for them to be mutually agreeable to everyone. Champagne likewise will have a couple placed in their downtown, and then the university will place two within the university district. We could actually start the program with fewer than six cars. Zipcar and IGO were very similar in this recommendation. You want to have cars in close proximity to each other so that if something happens and you've reserved a car and it's not there, that there's another one close to that location you can go to conveniently. So they wouldn't be side by side, but they would be within walking distance of each other. And the computerized reservation system, or in this case, the customer service portion of Zipcar would just direct you to the other vehicle, and you would be inconvenienced as minimally as possible. And we should probably talk quite a bit about the revenue guarantee itself. Essentially, Zipcar and car-sharing programs are popular in major metropolitan areas where there's a whole bunch of people and not many parking spaces, and big cities where people live without cars. So it's a successful program there. In communities like ours, where we don't... we're not surrounded by other major cities and metropolitan areas, both entities, both IGO and Zipcar insisted on a revenue guarantee to get the program going. The Zipcar recently launched, and by recently I mean within the last few years, launched in Ann Arbor, Michigan. They... the program there took off once they began marketing it more aggressively, and they dropped the revenue guarantee after only a few months. That's the sort of target we have for ours. But when you see the budget amendment, it's going to be drafted in a way that reflects a worst-case scenario. That's going to be for 100% of Urbana's portion of the revenue guarantee, as if there was not a minute of usage of any of those vehicles. The way it's really going to work is, as those vehicles get used, that usage counts against the revenue guarantee, and it'll be averaged across all six vehicles. So the MTD will get a bill for, you know, the first month, say it's $5,000 or whatever it is. They'll turn around and split that among the participating agencies, and then that'll be done on a quarterly basis. And then as the usage picks up, the revenue guarantee will be eliminated. But I think it's important to understand that if no usage ever occurs, then our liability in the three-year contract is about $81,000. So you'll see a budget amendment for a third of that, for $27,000, on the 2nd of September, and we hope that we never get anywhere near that actual cost. But that is our liability. I'm sure there's a lot more I should tell you about it, but maybe we should just answer questions.
Dennis Roberts.
If a person were going to be taking advantage of the use of the car, are they restricted to staying within the county? Or can they take trips really anywhere in the state in return?
There's no such restriction. I mean, it's not necessarily economical. For example, you're a student, and you want to go home for Christmas break. It's not a very economical way to do it because essentially you'd be charged for all those days while the vehicle isn't doing anything. But no, there's no restriction. You could drive it to California if you wanted. It's a membership-based program, so you would sign up as an individual member. So you pay your... you keep your membership active. Then you pay hourly for the vehicle. The precise price hasn't been set yet. It's likely to be $7 to $8 per hour. And as I said in the memo, that rental cost includes not only the cost of the vehicle and the cost of the parking space, but includes insurance and maintenance and fuel. And it's an extremely economical way to go, especially for short trips. We're thinking the primary users are going to be people who might not otherwise bring cars to the community. At least, we hope that's the base of our support here, our customer base. But there is no restriction. If you wanted to rent it and drive to Chicago for the day, or wherever you wanted, there is no restriction on that.
That would be more expensive than just renting a car from a regular car rental, right?
Likely, yeah. It would. There's a... the details of that are that each rental gets 180 miles of free usage. After that, they start to charge per mile in addition to per hour, but they don't charge you for the overnight hours. So you could... you know, you get a break in the middle of the night, but then they start charging again the next day.
Charlie.
There is a pretty good website, zipcar.com, to get information on this. I did see that they had a couple of spots in the Evanston parking garage at the market, and both cars were gone when I happened to visit there. And the other thing, of course, is that I think very popular in this community would be a small pickup truck, so I'd like to request one.
that's a wonderful suggestion. In fact, it's similar to one I made myself, but because I think that's a natural program. However, the revenue guarantees are not based on that. The different vehicles, and by different I mean more expensive vehicles, come with a higher rental fee and a higher revenue guarantee. However, if the program takes off and is successful, that would be a natural expansion of it past the six initial vehicles.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up is that I have a... well, isn't it... Libby, is it your son, or who's that Georgetown that we know in Washington, D.C.? Okay, one of our friends has a student in Washington, D.C., and the pickup truck there is the most popular thing for the kids to rent because they use it to haul stuff around for an hour or two, you know? Go shop for this, go shop for that. I mean, I need one to haul hay out to my garden plots or lumber from the lumberyard, that sort of thing. And that's why I think it'd be great to get something like that in the program.
Robert, did you want to comment on something?
Well, I was just going to be a resource, because I've been attending the meetings too and trying to participate. But I would add one thing, which I thought was very interesting in that when you think about it, a car spends 90 to 95% of its time not moving, but just stored. So we're building all this tremendous infrastructure, driveways and parking garages and all of that, in order to essentially store vehicles rather than not only move them. So the theory behind it is, what if during that 90 or 95% of the time, you could actually... several different people could use the same car? Theoretically, you could cut down on the number of cars, which is a provocative idea. And in Chicago, I know it's a different dynamic in Chicago because you have park to pay and things like that, but IGO has shown empirically through their statistics that they've done, their surveys, et cetera, that for every IGO car that they have, and they have maybe 200 or 300 in Chicago, that it takes, I think, 17 cars off the street. Because their IGO members actually... they've polled them, et cetera, and some IGO members have sold the second car, the third car, whatever, and instead they're making do with the smaller... with fewer cars. I think it would be a different dynamic here because of just our local economy and everything, but I think the concept is quite provocative. And we have other agencies that are wanting to do the same thing, so this is a great opportunity for cooperation with these other agencies.
Okay, Robert Lewis, I think you had your hand up first.
What are the membership requirements?
Well, a good driving record is the primary one. Each person essentially is approved individually. One thing I should point out they're going to explore is the city of Urbana being a customer that might have a positive impact on our own fleet operation, but also have potentially a positive impact on the revenue guarantee. So the agency can join, but the individual driver still has to have a good driving record. In terms of university students, the university will stipulate that they have affiliation with the university. But the membership requirements basically are that you can't have... you can't have a bunch of tickets, you have to be insurable, that sort of thing.
Sure.
And then, of course, you have to have some sort of credit card or something. I imagine credit cards can be mandatory to post online that they will bill against.
Okay. Thanks. David Garrick?
I'm used to thinking of Zipcar as being for major metropolitan areas, and that's... I'm curious, are there other towns roughly this size? You mentioned Ann Arbor. Are there others? Or is this something that Zipcar is also exploring as being new?
It's a relatively new program with Zipcar. There's a college community in Texas. I don't remember the name of the community.
One that's been brought up that's similar in size and location away from metropolitan areas, I think Santa Cruz, California.
Santa Cruz, California.
Which has University of California at Santa Cruz. There's a couple of actually small colleges in small towns in Ohio, I remember specifically in Maine, and there's... altogether, there's, oh, say, 30 or 40 college towns that Zipcar is located in. And I know that they think that there's a growing market there because... just because of the way college towns work.
So it is a relatively new target market for them, where they're actually looking at university communities and seeing how they can fit in.
Any other questions for Pat Paletti?
I'm sure that, you know, questions may occur between now and the second, and if they do, call me or email me, and we'll get them addressed.
Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.